Our Father who art in heaven, as a body we congregate in this council chamber for the betterment of our fellow citizens, lead us that we may do all things well. Amen.
Bled allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we begin this evening, I'd like to start with a moment of silence for former Service Department employee Fred Jansen and all the other St. Bernard residents that have died as a result of the COVID-19 virus. Thank you. All right, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. DeBurki.
Present.
Mr. Ray Culberson.
Here.
Mr. Schuldmeier. Mr. Bob Culberson.
Here.
Mrs. Beddinghouse.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Houseville.
Here.
Let the record show all seven members are present and no one is absent. Members of council, what is your pleasure on the reading of the minutes of the last meeting? Ms. Beddinghouse?
I'll second that, Mr. President.
A motion by Ms. Beddinghouse, seconded by Ms. Houseville, to dispense with the reading of the last minutes. Are there any remarks? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Members of council, are there any errors or corrections to the minutes submitted? Not the minutes will stand as submitted. We'll move to reports of city officials. Mayor Jonathan Sutcher.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, I'd like to thank the residents of this community who have been very patient and supportive during 2020. This has been a difficult year for everyone, but I could have not gotten through this without the support of our wonderful village council, our incredible city hall staff, our amazing service, police, fire, and recreation departments, and the many volunteers in this community who make this such a special place. I'd also like to remind everyone about the Light Up St. Bernard event on Saturday night, where residents will place luminarias in front of their homes. Kits are still available at city hall and will be available on Friday for anyone that needs one last minute. Anyone wishing to help line Vine Street with luminarias can meet at the recreation office on Saturday at 3:00 PM. I'd like to wish all of our residents a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Also, I'd like to ask that we please go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Auditor, Ms. Burke, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the table tonight are two ordinances prepared by the auditor department. First one being ordinance number 38-2020. This is the annual year-end appropriation. And I'm just going to summarize it since there are so many lines in it. It is creating a new line item, 07-09 McClellan Avenue Road Improvement. It has additional appropriations of $109,446. It has, I'm sorry, a total of $670,512.21 in decreased appropriations. The other ordinance on the table is ordinance 39-2020, which is the budget for 2021. The budget total is $13,199,657. And I'm not sure if this should be part of my report, but I've used my time to say it. I'm having an issue with council members, and they will know who they are, I will not point them out, using a resident and giving him untruths. We'll just leave it at that. And he is harassing myself and harassing me at work, to the point that some of the council members are telling him that I have a money tree and I'm hiding money, or so he is saying they are saying. And this is to the point where it's harassment at my home and at work. And there was, we were hoping to do this in executive session, but there's not a good enough reason to go into executive session. These people know who they are. They know who they're using as a pawn to come after me. And I'm just going to ask one last time if you guys would please stop. I can't take much more of this. It is my reputation on the line here. When they're telling this person that I'm hiding money, that I just have a money tree? Well, common sense tells us we got over half a million dollars in COVID money this year, which will increase our revenues. But it really needs to stop, to the point where the police officers have called to talk to me about this. And I just wish if we could all be adults and we would stop playing these games that they call it with this individual and just be professionals and let's not make up stories and let somebody run with it. I'm sorry, I might be a little shaky, but this has been going on for over a year and it's just getting worse. And I'm done with it. And so I'm just asking everybody to be a professional and not play games on text and Facebook and emails when someone's reputation is on the line. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Director of law, Ms. Anne Volkerberg.
Thank you. I've been looking into Airbnb legislation. I know there have been some questions about that. Not so much in the, within, starting from like summer through fall. We are, I'm just kind of looking at what other areas are doing. I see it more in big cities versus smaller entities, but we are, I am looking at that. And also, excuse me for frogging my throat tonight. I will be meeting with Mr. Paul and working with the mayor to address some of the issues we've had about trying to get our citations regarding property issues actually enforced, as opposed to people just being cited to court and paying a fine. We need to make sure that we're addressing getting things removed that need to be removed. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Treasurer, Mr. Ungru.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening I have a statement from First State Bank for the memorial fund that we have down with them at the end of November. Our balance was $5,656.02. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Safety and service director, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. And so the year ends, I believe early next spring you will see some of the progress and will be able to visualize what has occurred. What I will leave you with is that the village is under a vast amount of progression. Please be tolerant. May your days be merry. To my community, red and green. Not stop and go, but more for the colors of Christmas. Colors are all around us. This time of year, the colors illuminate very bright. We are filled with happy thoughts, merry memories, and a spirit that moves us. Keep hold of this, as it also brightens the aura that encapsulate each of us. If we intensify the colors that surround us, we allow the sharing of peace and kindness toward one another, which in turn brings others to awareness. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Tax commissioner slash administrator, Ms. Helms.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I have November's monthly report for the tax office. Tax collections for November were $614,686. Tax refunds for November were $133,475.75. The village is up 4.18% in tax revenue from November of 2019. Year-to-date tax collection is up 4.5%. $63,380 in delinquent taxes with capital recovery. And $105,218 in delinquent taxes with our attorney for judgment garnishment collection work. Also a reminder, the 2019 nonfilers, in November, the tax department mailed 610 letters to those who have not filed 2019 city income taxes. I want to thank the 165 residents who responded and have taken care of the matter. We still have 445 residents who have not responded. Failure to file your tax return may result in a summons to court and additional fees that could be avoided. I will be out of the office from December 21st through January 3rd. I will return on January 4th, 2021. Jake will be available in the tax office if you need to file or make your payment. Have a safe and Merry Christmas, everyone. Happy holidays, and let's all hope for a better 2021 New Year. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll move to reports of standing committees. Finance, Mr. DeBurki.
My report.
Thank you. Safety, Mr. Ray Culberson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Got the fire department report for November. There were a total of 44 fire incidents, seven structure fires, four, one vehicle fire. There was a total of 82 EMS incidents. Forty-nine were transported, which included five non-breathers, two unconscious, four auto accidents, and one overdose. Mutual aid from the fire department was given three times to Norwood, four times to Elmwood, two times to Little Miami, and once to Delhi. Mutual aid was received one time from Elmwood, two times from Little Miami, two times from Springfield Township, two times from Norwood, two times for Redding, two times from Wyoming, and one time from Lachlan. EMS mutual aid was given to Elmwood Place 18 times, Little Miami once, and Cincinnati once. And mutual aid was received from Little Miami once, and Elmwood Place once. And I too would like to wish all the residents a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Service, Mr. Schuldmeier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a brief service report for November 2020. The service department placed 23 trucks at residence, 26 dumpsters placed at residence, 263 special pickups at residences, and 181.14 tons of garbage taken to the landfill. Recycling report is 29.91 tons of recycling material and 2,860 pounds of scrap metal. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Public improvements, Mr. Bob Culberson.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the last CIC meeting, the board decided to accept two applications. One for the Andrew property, which is 4913 Andrew, and the other one was for 41 Baker. Those applications were accepted, so hopefully we can start to see some progress on those properties fairly shortly. The next CIC meeting will have a guest speaker. Potentially, we're looking at Go Vibrant partnershiping with those individuals that would come in and actually design and post signs around the city for a walking trail. So they will be attending the next CIC meeting, which is now on the fourth Tuesday of the month. So the next CIC meeting will be January 26th at 6:00 PM in Councilor Chambers. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Laws, contracts, and claims, Ms. Beddinghouse.
Thank you, Mr. President. Valerie, I just have a question for you about the Airbnb. I know that the mayor had brought it up before to put it in laws, contracts, and claims. So I'm assuming that after you meet with them, that it'll come back and request to be put in laws, contracts, and claims. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's probably going to be at least a month, but I'm looking at things.
Great. Thank you. And I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Marketing, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remind citizens that there is still time to purchase a personalized memorial brick to be placed at Frank Robinson Field. The cost is $100 per brick. Contact Recreation if you are interested. I would also like to extend a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all residents and business owners. Great things are right around the corner for all of us in 2021. Looking forward to having a fresh start and a new year. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Business and industry, Ms. Houseville.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight I have the Village of St. Bernard Building and Zoning Department for 2020 November Activities Report. Building activities, six residential permits, three commercial permits. Total fees for residential permits is $1,168.55. Total fees for commercial permits were $743.34. The amount paid back to the treasurer of the state of Ohio for residential was $11.68. And the amount paid back to the treasurer of the state of Ohio for commercial was $22.29. And I too want to wish everybody in St. Bernard a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee of the whole, Ms. Keflin.
Committee of the whole has been emailed to the council members and the administration.
Thank you. Are there any communications? Nope. All right, clerk, could you please give the first reading of Resolution Number 11-2020?
Resolution Number 11-2020. A resolution authorizing the Village of St. Bernard to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required, and declaring an emergency.
Members of council, you've heard the first reading of Resolution Number 11-2020. What is your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Ms. Beddinghouse.
I make a motion to suspend with the second and third reading of Resolution Number 11-2020.
A motion by Ms. Beddinghouse, seconded by Mr. Ray Culberson, to suspend with the second and third reading of Resolution Number 11-2020. Are there any remarks? If not, clerk, will you call the roll on the motion?
Mr. DeBurki.
Aye.
Mr. Ray Culberson.
Aye.
Mr. Schuldmeier.
Aye.
Mr. Bob Culberson.
Aye.
Mrs. Beddinghouse.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Houseville.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Members of council, what is your pleasure on adoption?
Mr. President.
Ms. Beddinghouse.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11-2020.
I'll second it.
A motion by Ms. Beddinghouse, seconded by Mr. Ray Culberson, to adopt Resolution Number 11-2020. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. DeBurki.
Aye.
Mr. Ray Culberson.
Aye.
Mr. Schuldmeier.
Aye.
Mr. Bob Culberson.
Aye.
Mrs. Beddinghouse.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Houseville.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Resolution Number 11-2020 is adopted as read. Clerk, can you please give the first reading of ordinance Number 38-2020?
Ordinance Number 38-2020. Authorizing and directing the auditor to create new line items and provide additional appropriations and decrease appropriations, and declaring an emergency.
Members of council, you've heard the first reading of ordinance Number 38-2020. What is your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Ms. Beddinghouse.
Make a motion to suspend with the second and third reading of ordinance Number 38-2020.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
A motion by Ms. Beddinghouse, seconded by Ms. Houseville, to suspend with the second and third reading of ordinance 38-2020. Are there any remarks? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address council? If not, clerk, will you call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Mr. DeBurki.
Aye.
Mr. Ray Culberson.
Aye.
Mr. Schuldmeier.
Aye.
Mr. Bob Culberson.
Aye.
Mrs. Beddinghouse.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Houseville.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Members of council, what is your pleasure on adoption?
Mr. President.
Ms. Beddinghouse.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance Number 38-2020.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
A motion by Ms. Beddinghouse, seconded by Ms. Houseville, to adopt ordinance Number 38-2020. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. DeBurki.
Aye.
Mr. Ray Culberson.
Aye.
Mr. Schuldmeier.
Aye.
Mr. Bob Culberson.
Aye.
Mrs. Beddinghouse.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Houseville.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Ordinance Number 38-2020 is adopted as read. Clerk, will you please give the first reading of ordinance Number 39-2020?
Ordinance Number 39-2020. An ordinance to make appropriation for expenses and other expenditures of the Village of St. Bernard, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year 2021, and establishing new line items, and declaring an emergency.
Members of council, you've heard the first reading of ordinance Number 39-2020. What is your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Ms. Beddinghouse.
Make a motion to suspend with the second and third reading of ordinance Number 39-2020.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
A motion by Ms. Beddinghouse, seconded by Ms. Houseville, to suspend with the second and third reading of ordinance 39-2020. Are there any remarks? If not, clerk, will you call the roll on suspension?
Mr. DeBurki.
Aye.
Mr. Ray Culberson.
Aye.
Mr. Schuldmeier.
Aye.
Mr. Bob Culberson.
Aye.
Mrs. Beddinghouse.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Houseville.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Members of council, what is your pleasure on adoption?
Mr. President.
Ms. Beddinghouse.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance Number 39-2020.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
A motion by Ms. Beddinghouse, seconded by Ms. Houseville, to adopt ordinance Number 39-2020. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. DeBurki.
Aye.
Mr. Ray Culberson.
Aye.
Mr. Schuldmeier.
Aye.
Mr. Bob Culberson.
Aye.
Mrs. Beddinghouse.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Houseville.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Ordinance Number 39-2020 is adopted as read. Please give the first reading of ordinance Number 40-2020.
Ordinance Number 40-2020. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Safety and Service to enter into a contract with war and fire equipment for the purchase of fire department turnout gear, and declaring an emergency.
Members of council, you've heard the first reading of ordinance Number 40-2020. What is your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Ms. Beddinghouse.
I make a motion to suspend with the second and third reading of ordinance Number 40-2020.
I'll second that.
A motion by Ms. Beddinghouse, seconded by Mr. Ray Culberson, to suspend with the second and third reading of ordinance Number 40-2020. Are there any remarks? Anyone in the audience wish to address? Clerk, will you please call the roll on suspension?
Mr. DeBurki.
Aye.
Mr. Ray Culberson.
Aye.
Mr. Schuldmeier.
Aye.
Mr. Bob Culberson.
Aye.
Mrs. Beddinghouse.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Houseville.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Members of council, what is your pleasure on adoption?
Mr. President.
Ms. Beddinghouse.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance Number 40-2020.
I'll second that.
A motion by Ms. Beddinghouse, seconded by Mr. Ray Culberson, to adopt ordinance Number 40-2020. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. DeBurki.
Aye.
Mr. Ray Culberson.
Aye.
Mr. Schuldmeier.
Aye.
Mr. Bob Culberson.
Aye.
Mrs. Beddinghouse.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Houseville.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Ordinance Number 40-2020 is adopted as read. Does anyone on council have anything on their old business? Like a motion to go into executive session possibly for collective bargaining?
Mr. President.
Ms. Beddinghouse.
Mr. President, I make a motion to go into executive session.
For collective bargaining?
Collective bargaining. Or collective bargaining.
A motion by Ms. Beddinghouse, seconded by Mr. Ray Culberson, to meet in executive session to discuss collective bargaining at the end of this meeting. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. DeBurki.
Aye.
Mr. Ray Culberson.
Aye.
Mr. Schuldmeier.
Aye.
Mr. Bob Culberson.
Aye.
Mrs. Beddinghouse.
Aye.
Mrs. Miller.
Aye.
Mrs. Houseville.
Aye.
Seven, seven ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Council will go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining at the end of the meeting. Does anyone have anything else on their old business?
Mr. President.
Mr. Sutcher.
You do have the new ambulance here, is that correct?
It's the last.
The last?
I can get it back.
Oh, I don't need it. All right. Well, we can see it another day. Thought we were gonna have show and tell today for the new ambulance because it was here for a short time and left. But it is in and will be in service at the end of the weekend.
Thank you. Anyone else on their own business? I'll tell ya. Does anyone in council have anything on their new business? All right. I'm assuming nothing in the audience? All right. Then the next committee of the whole will be Thursday, January fourteenth, at seven P.M. And council will go into executive session and reconvene when we are finished.
All right, council is back in session. Council met an executive session to discuss collective bargaining. At this time I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President.
Committee of the whole.
Committee of the whole.
That's just an agenda thing, yeah.
Mr. President.
Mr. Ray Colbertson.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mr. Ray Colbertson, second by Ms. Houseley, to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. We...